Preparedness, seriously. As in these past couple of years, we never know how disaster will evolve. If you wait till the last minute, that's when everybody's in there wanting to get those last little bit of supplies. Take your time and making sure that you have all the exact items that you need to put in your emergency kit. That should be able to support you for up to at least seven days. It's important to know your evacuation zone. If we get into a situation where a decision has to be made that you're in danger from the surge coming in that's created by a storm event, that you know when your zone is called that it's time for you to go. Preparedness, preparedness, preparedness. You never know what the hazard is going to be, what the event is going to be. But if you take those basic steps that we talked about, it can apply to any hazard that impacts Hillsborough County and your family will stay safe.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' public hearings. First, I'd like to read into the records a memorandum from Commissioner Hagan. Please be advised that I will be late for tonight's budget public hearing due to a scheduled event at my daughter's school. Please read the reason for my late arrival into the records. Thank you. And also, I would like to acknowledge that we received some letters from various organizations in support of the $10 million in the FY 2024 budget for affordable housing. The organizations are Hillsborough County Affordable Housing Advisory Board, the Tampa Housing Authority, and Habitat for Humanity of Hillsborough County. And with that being said, we'll have a roll call.
Hagan? Cameron Sepeda?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Wastel?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. And now to our public hearing. There are two public hearings scheduled for this evening. One on the capital improvement program, our CIP, and the second on the fiscal year 2024 millage rates and budget. Because changes to the budget could impact the first year of the six-year CIP, it is appropriate to conclude the budget public hearing prior to concluding the CIP hearing. I would like to open up the CIP public hearing and then entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to the conclusion of the public hearing on the budget.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Wastel, and second by Commissioner Orne. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
The purpose of tonight's public hearing on the budget is to take public comment on the millage rates and the budget prior to the board adopting the millage rates and a budget for fiscal year 2024. In a moment, the budget director will read into the records the change in the aggregate FY 2024 millage rate from the aggregate rollback rate, after which he would briefly discuss the status of the budget. At that point, we will take public comment. At the conclusion of public comment, the board will discuss any final changes to the millage or budget. If necessary, there will be a short break while the impact of any final changes is calculated. Finally, state law requires certain information to be read into the record prior to the board adopting resolution on the millage rates and the budget. Kevin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kevin Bricki, Management Budget Director, good evening. The calculated change in millage represents a 7.59% increase from the aggregate rollback rate. State law requires that we also describe the reason for the increase over the rollback rate. The budget under consideration tonight reflects, in part, normal as well as recently heightened inflationary increases in the cost of doing business. It also reflects the need to provide local government services to a growing population, which includes ongoing funding for transportation, fire rescue services, statutory and contractual commitments, union contracts, technology upgrades, constitutional officers, and certain other county needs. Commissioners, the budget the board will adopt tonight reflects the tentative budget approved on September 14th, as amended by updates that may be made. Also, on September 7th, the board approved the FY 24 carryforward inclusion of $1.4 million of unspent FY 23 funding for three organizations. The FY 24 budget is balanced. Additionally, the county continues to maintain its general obligation AAA bond rating from all three major rating agencies. The budget you will vote on tonight reflects investments that are consistent with strategic focuses. With that, I'll give a brief overview of the budget on the screen. Thank you. The FY 24 tentative budget that we're looking at tonight is $9.033 billion. And the operating portion of the budget is about, of the total budget, is about $3.653 billion. The sheriff is about 16.5%. Enterprise funds, which are water, wastewater, solid waste, is about 14.2%. And when one looks at the sheriff, enterprise funds, healthcare services, and fire rescue, that's about nearly 24% of the overall budget. The countywide general fund, areas where the board has the most discretion, the tentative countywide general fund budget is $1.417 billion. About 55.6% of the countywide operating budget is accounted for by the sheriff and other constitutional and other outside agencies. Moving to the unincorporated area general fund, that's the fund that funds municipal type services to unincorporated area residents and businesses, things like policing, fire rescue, that sort of thing. And indeed, looking at the unincorporated area budget, general fund budget, public safety is about 71% of the total operating fund, funds within the unincorporated area Tonight, the property tax millage rates under consideration are unchanged from last year, unchanged from fiscal year 23. Countywide general fund, a little more than 5.7 mills. Unincorporated area general fund, about 4.37 mills. That, again, is the fund and the millage that provides municipal type services. And at 4.3745, the unincorporated area millage is below the three cities, which vary from about 5.7 to about 6.45 mills. Some budget highlights. The county administrators organization as a whole has about 515 less positions in FY 23 compared to FY 07. That's a decrease of 7.8%. Over that same period, the fire rescue department has had an increase of 34%, but that's from the addition of new fire stations and the operating impacts of those stations as those need to be staffed. But even excluding fire rescue, the county administrators organization has about 14.7% less positions in FY 23 than FY 07. The FY 24 budget does include the new Progress Village South Fire Station, the funding funds to construct it, but also the funds to staff it and operate it. Also included is the new sheriff training facility, which will also have some emergency management uses, additional funding for the roadway pavement preservation program, health and property insurance increases, various park renovations, and compensation and benefit enhances in a tight market. Last week, of course, a week ago tonight, as a matter of fact, on September 14th, the board did adopt the tentative budget and millages. Those were advertised, and this meeting was advertised, September 21st. And tonight is the night where the board will adopt the final millages and budget. You'll take public comment, have some board discussion, and then adopt FY 24 millage rates. And then after that, the FY 24 budget. That will conclude the budget public hearing, and then you would move on to reopen the capital improvement program and approve the six-year capital improvement program. With that, I thank you very much.
And thank you, Kevin. At this time, we'll have public comment. Our first three speakers are...
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to make a motion. We've got a lot of speakers here tonight, so I wanted to make a motion to limit public comments to two minutes, just so everybody has a chance to speak.
Second.
I'll just, I won't support that because I think we have the time and we can sit to think. So I would just say I won't be supporting that at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Wastel?
I'll let, I'll let this motion play out first, and then I'll make a brief statement.
Sure you don't want to make it before the motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to note to anybody that is here tonight to speak on the two flag items that were mentioned yesterday for the Future Career Academy or ECTBA, I have decided that I will not be taking up those items. While I do believe that they should and will be scrutinized, I do believe in the sense of fairness, they should go in line with the policy that was passed earlier this year, so they will not be brought up tonight, and there is no need for you to wait during public comment. Thank you.
And thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Orne, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Commissioner Wastel? Motion failed, three to three. Commissioner Kemp, Myers, and Wastel voted no.
Okay. With that being said, we'll take our first three speakers, Deborah Owens, Gabriel Morgan, and Marsha Redberg. Deborah Owens? Good evening.
Good evening. News reports of rampant fraud and careless dispersment of tax revenue are commonplace. As a taxpayer, this makes me suspicious about waste. So I spent three days reviewing various state statutes that address social welfare, plus this county's code of ordinances and laws, its comprehensive plan, and its charter. I discovered that state and local tax money is legislated extensively, creating a statutory burden on taxpayers for the support of indigent persons in all aspects of their lives. These federal, state, and local welfare statutes have turned our government into a philanthropic entity funded by tax revenue. The inflow of persons into this country and state, lured by government largess, will continue to escalate to the point that taxpayers will find themselves indigent. I also came to realize that the job of county commissioners is merely to guide, to create, to stimulate development of programs designed to care for indigent persons. The development of programs that fulfill your statutory duties results in a steady stream of nonprofit organizations coming to this body asking for funding. Tax money should be dispensed within a very narrow statutory scope. This will ensure that tax revenue is legally spent on the purpose for which it is earmarked. Therefore, the county commission needs to specify what spending is and is not approved, and this commission must mandate that every penny of tax money be documented and an annual report submitted. The tax money is for statutorily recognized indigent persons, not for salaries of 501(c)(3) board members, or the upkeep of the nonprofit's holdings, its advertising, et cetera. This annual financial report will allow the commission to decide which nonprofit should receive tax funds in future, based on the honest and good stewardship of taxpayer donation. Regarding arts councils, museums, and the like, use of tax money gifted to these institutions should be carefully delineated and monitored, and they too must submit an annual report to the commission showing their stewardship of tax revenues. In speaking here tonight, I wish simply to remind this body of its fiscal responsibilities. Let our Hillsborough County government be a shining example in its careful management of the taxpayers' hard-earned money. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Gabriel Morgan?
Good evening. Reverend Dr. Gabriel Morgan of St. Paul Lutheran on Central, and I'm here with the Hillsborough Organization for Progress and Equality. And of course, you know what we're going to talk about. You're going to hear many stories tonight, as you have previously, about the way this impacts them and their families. But I want to start by responding to some of the debate and discussion that we heard last week. I know it wasn't technically debate, but there were different options being proposed. And I want to contextualize that by saying first that budgets are moral documents. Now, I know that we listen to preachers and ministers make these kinds of claims, but it is true. Okay, we're talking about a $9 billion budget with 10 million going to affordable housing, which is pennies. Okay, that's pennies. People don't know the difference between millions and billions. A million seconds is a couple of weeks, a billion seconds is over 30 years. All right? Even with the millage comment, and I want to start with that, because I really, this puzzles me deeply, how we could be possibly discussing the millage rate as being at issue with the Affordable Housing Fund. The Budget Office ran the numbers for this, and I'm glad because it confirmed, I had to, after I listened to this last week, I had to go home and run the numbers myself because I couldn't believe that's what we were discussing. If you take 10 million out of the 900 and some odd million in revenue from the millage, that's like seven cents in the millage rate. That's what that translates into. On a $350,000 property, that's like $20 a year, less than $2 a month. You can't even buy a cup of coffee for that. And that funds so that people can live in homes, so they're not sleeping on the streets. And unless we're saying that basically the homeless deserve it, and they deserve to be punished by being left homeless and on the streets because they can't pay their bills, then I refuse to believe that this is the thing we're debating about changing the funding for in order to make dollars work. Now, I think a very reasonable proposal was made. We have way more reserves in the county than we need, and even if we shifted 10 million from the reserve contribution, you'd still be at over 22% reserve. Is that accurate? I think, do I understand the numbers on that? It's better for us to have an extra pile of money we don't even need for our AAA ratings so people don't have a place to live? We need like 30,000 units here, as the Schimberg Center said, projected to be 60,000 by 2040. Right? We have a few hundred now? We need hundreds of millions for affordable housing, and the thing we ought to be debating is increasing it, not decreasing it. Please, dear commissioners, maintain the 10 million for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Marsha Redberg, and I'm here with the Hope Group. I'm also a member of Pomaceo Presbyterian Church. First, I'd like to thank you all for the past 10 million a year for affordable housing. Second, I'd like to ask you to continue that full 10 million for this next budget cycle. And third, I want to give you a little example of what your money has done. Pomaceo Presbyterian merged with a faltering Belmar Presbyterian Church. Their building was in bad shape, and we didn't need the property. So we decided, it's on Manhattan Avenue across from Jan Platt Library. So we decided that we would sell that, and there was plenty of interest in that site, which was zone CG, on bus lines, in a great area, from commercial folks. But we decided we'd like to do something that really made an impact in the community with it. And archway developers came to the church and made a proposal to buy the property. There was a lot of concern at the church, that's a heavy lift of finance and build affordable housing. And so it took some doing to convince the church to, you know, have faith, go that way, and, but they did. And it was in part your money, there was also some Tampa Housing Authority money and some other pieces of money that they were able to cobble together this package. Right now, if you drive down Manhattan over by Jan Platt Library, you will see 100 units going up on that property. What does that mean? That means, and it was 2.5 million out of your fund that went for this property, that means you were able to leverage 2.5 million dollars into a much bigger, more expensive development. Now, for any of us, that's a good investment. So we're talking about meeting one of the biggest public needs in this community. Investing some money, yes, you always got to invest some money for anything good, but taking that and leveraging it with other dollars from other folks in order to have something that is going to keep 100 families out of sleeping in their cars or on the streets, give them real homes and a good place where they can get to work, they've got public transportation, Madison Middle School next door, library across the street. There are other places that you can help to build this kind of community resource. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Barbara Topeka, Sheila Simmons-Tribble, and Sarah Combs?
Good evening. Hello, my name is Barb Tepke. Please vote yes to continue the $10 million allocation to build and rehab affordable housing. This is from the University of Florida Schimberg Center report from 2020. The data is from the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. Page 14 says, "How much can Hillsborough County workers afford to pay for housing each month?" The first category says 500 to 700. So, the people included are waitstaff, preschool teachers, home health aides, retail sales and cashiers, cooks, janitors, and cleaners. Let's say the bottom end, if they can afford $500, that would be 30% of their income, then they make around 1,700 a month, or 20,400 a year. If they make 20,000 a year, that means they make $10 an hour. Not too much, but at least they're working full-time, making money. That includes waitstaff, preschool teachers, home health aides, retail sales and cashiers, cooks, janitors, and cleaners. If they make enough for the high end, $700, if that's 30% of their income, then they make 2,300 a month, or close to 28,000 a year. 28,000 means they make $14 an hour. I don't think, I don't think everybody in the category makes $15 an hour. I hope they all make at least $10 an hour. These are people working full-time, waitstaff, preschool teachers, home health aides, retail sales and cashiers, cooks, janitors, and cleaners. Please vote yes for the 10 million affordable housing in honor of these people working full-time in low-wage jobs, so that there will be affordable housing for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Again, I want to thank you for what you have done in the past as it relates to the Hope Trust Fund, but I want to also say this evening that affordable housing is out of reach for many of our residents, and particularly families and seniors with low and very low incomes. High rental rates combined with financial insecurity of our most vulnerable residents has led to high evictions and increased homelessness. And we were looking at some stats on yesterday, and so many of the high evictions are from single-family home, or single families, but particularly those led by women. So we are really impacting single mothers raising their children. One of the things that I want to share with you, and Barb sort of spoke to it a few minutes ago, one of my neighbors has a granddaughter. Her granddaughter does have a job. However, she is paying $233 weekly for her 17-month-old daughter. She is now having to rely on her brother for food, car insurance, car note, but also she is feeling so embarrassed that she's working every day, and it's hard for her to pay her rent. So when we talk about affordable housing, and let me give you a definition I saw the other day, and it said, affordable housing means that no one has to pay more than 30% of their income for rent. Right now, we have some 94,000 families that is actually experiencing that. The last story I want to share with you is this young man, and we heard this in one of our House meetings. He's a veteran, and he is now homeless. He lost his job. He was a security officer. He is now having to sleep on the floor in the home of his cousin. And he said, "This is very embarrassing. This is very embarrassing." And so until we begin to keep that pathway to affordable housing through the fund, we will be devastating our community and our county residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sarah Combs, good evening.
Good evening, county commissioners, and thank you all so much for your support of the university area community. My name is Sarah Combs, and I'm the CEO at University Area CDC. And I stand before you this evening in support of fully funding the Hope Affordable Housing Fund. This funding allowed UA CDC in partnership with Blue Sky Communities to build Uptown Sky, 61 beautiful affordable housing units, in which almost all of you were able to attend and see firsthand the impact that this development has had on the families in our community. I can honestly say that this development will change the trajectory of 61 families, opening other doors of opportunity, access, and sustainability. While you've heard from a lot of adults on this topic, I want to emphasize the paramount importance of housing for our children in our community. According to the National Alliance to End Homelessness, 1/5 of the housing insecure living in Tampa are children. Of all the heart-wrenching situations that I've experienced around housing insecurity, the one... the ones that will never leave me are the ones around innocent children. Commissioners, for those of you who are parents, who are aunts or uncles, godparents or mentors, I ask that you visualize how important housing is for them as we continue this conversation. Housing is not merely a roof over one's head, it's the foundation upon which a child's future is built. As stewards of our society, it is our duty to recognize that profound impact that stable and suitable housing has on the well-being and the development of our children. First and foremost, housing provides children with a sense of security and stability. A safe and stable home environment is the bedrock upon which children can grow, learn, and thrive. It offers them a refuge from the unpredictable challenges of this world, and there are many. In a place where they can feel protected, loved, and nurtured, this is our job. Without stable housing, our children face a constant state of uncertainty, which can hinder their emotional and their cognitive development. A stable home environment allows parents to better focus on their children's needs, enabling them to pursue education and employment opportunities. When our children are raised in a stable housing environment, they are more likely to achieve higher levels of education, earn better incomes in the future, and escape the cycle of poverty that might otherwise trap them. In conclusion, housing is not merely a matter of shelter, but a fundamental determinant of a child's present and future. As commissioners, your decisions have the power to shape the lives of our community's children. I urge you to prioritize affordable, safe, and stable housing as an investment in the future prosperity and the well-being of our society. By doing so, we can ensure that every child has the opportunity to grow into a healthy, educated, and fulfilled adult, contributing to the strength and vitality of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ed Cronin, Robert Bolichi, and Demar, I won't mess up the last name.
What were the names again, please?
Ed, we have Ed Cronin, C-R-O-N-Y-N. Is she here? Okay. Good evening. Robert Bolichi, and D-Y-M-A, Demar Obaleim, A-B-U, capital O-L-E-I-M. Is she here? Are they here? Okay, go ahead, hon, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ed Cronin. I belong to the Hyde Park United Methodist Church, who's right here in South Tampa, and is one of, I think it's 26 member congregations of the Hillsborough Organization for Progress and Equality. And, you know, when I joined Hope, I really didn't know what to expect. I'd belonged to lots of advocacy organizations, political involvement groups in my younger years in college and all that, and those were fun, but it was mostly, you point out a problem and then you demand change, and there's not really much thought put into how you get there. Hope is different. Hope met with county staff, with housing experts, to define not just a problem, but a solution, and a solution that was practical. The results of that effort, meeting with county staff, with county commissioners, with housing experts, reading Schimberg analyses, came with just an ask of $10 million a year to be supported by the county commission. It was far, far, far less than the need, as you've heard, but this is what we needed to do in order to get approval. It was approved unanimously, not a single commissioner voted against that. As a matter of fact, it was named the Hope Affordable Housing Act in honor of the many people in the county who supported this safe, this practical solution. And, you know, this has made a difference, as you've heard from the other speakers here today. There are hundreds of families being helped, not nearly enough. You know, my other thing that I do with my church is I help volunteer with a group called Open Arms, which provides meals, Bible study, dental and medical care, connection with Metropolitan Ministries, people who can get them connected to other resources. These are people who are called essential workers. That's a term we used a lot during the COVID crisis, and we haven't heard so much anymore. People work in restaurants, hospitals, schools, they clean our homes, they make sure there's food on our table. These are the people who are the fabric of our community, and they are also the lowest-paid workers in our community. Lowest paid doesn't mean lowest value. These are essential workers. Please, when you're looking for ways to balance the budget, and inflation, as you mentioned, inflation is the reason for this miller rate reduction proposal, well, who do you think that hits the most? These essential workers who are providing the services that we all rely upon for our livelihoods. So when you're looking for ways to balance the budget, please don't take from their pockets. These are the people who need, who need us, just like we need them. Thank you for your support.
Thank you for your comments. Robert Bolichi.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Robert Boilo, so I'm not sure if you're calling me or someone else.
I think it's you, sir. Go ahead.
Me?
Yes.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm not good at memorizing things, so I'm going to reiterate some of what was already said, but add some new things. In response to hundreds of stories heard from residents regarding the lack of decent affordable housing from 2013 to 2019, Hope persistently worked to get the Hillsborough County Commissioners to establish and invest local public funds in a local affordable housing fund. Since 2019, the county has committed $46 million of local funds to create 1,100 more affordable housing units, as well as purchase land for future developments. That means so far over 1,100 working families, children, people with disabilities, and seniors will have a decent and stable place to call home, leading to a more economically viable, stable, healthy, and safe community overall. Currently, $10 million has been recommended in the county budget for fiscal year '24 and planned for fiscal year '25 budget for affordable housing. However, some of you have voiced moving these funds away from affordable housing. Hope fought for the passage of the ordinance to make GAAP funding available to meet the great need for affordable housing. As was pointed out by a couple of previous speakers, it's such a great return on investment. The GAAP funding is used to match funds, federal, state, and other funds, private and public. The proposed funds are needed for the development of quality housing that is affordable for working families, seniors with very low incomes, and people with disabilities. These funds are protecting the livelihoods of hundreds of families through the development of private-public partnerships, and helps the county access additional state and federal money for the creation of quality affordable housing via GAAP funding. So affordable housing builders can continue their greatly needed work in our county, provide decent affordable housing, which brings safety, security, stability, health, and success in life to those in need. As was mentioned previously, Uptown Sky was one of those developments. The affordable housing crisis for working families, people with disabilities, and seniors with low and very low incomes continues. These funds are consistently needed more than ever for the development of more quality housing that is affordable. Our county needs an ongoing commitment from you, our commissioners, so the funds in the recommended budget should not be moved to serve other purposes. We ask for your leadership by approving the $10 million in the 2024 recommended budget for affordable housing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Demar, I'm going to spell the last name. Oh, you got it. Thank you so much. Good evening.
There's a bunch of vowels. I know it's me. All right. Good evening, respectable county commissioners and county staff. My name is Demar Abu Alaim, and I'm the president of a local women's organization called 200 Muslim Women Who Care. Just to give you a background of why we are here tonight, we are a community partner with the Hope Organization.
Hello. My name is Nora Hamid. 200 Muslim Women Who Care was founded in 2017 with a mission to connect all women to their collective power of helping others through philanthropy and compassion. Together, we support Tampa Bay nonprofits in building safer, healthier, and stronger communities for everyone.
Through collective giving, our members have donated over a half a million dollars to more than 95 Tampa Bay nonprofits. We support organizations that address a wide range of issues, including but not limited to environmental protection, human trafficking, safe housing, healthcare, equality, and more. In addition to financial support, we also raise awareness for charities, organizing volunteer work, and provide educational outreach across Tampa. We are so fortunate to live here in Tampa Bay because we have built relationships with over 95 local nonprofits in the community, and that is not even a drop in the bucket of the nonprofits we haven't even reached yet. We truly have amazing individuals working here in Tampa Bay in the nonprofit sector who are making our lives better for everyone in the community. Of those nonprofits, we have learned about the clients that they serve here in our community. Many of them are struggling, working families, people with disabilities, and seniors with very low income. The funds in the recommended budget, as required by the ordinance, should not be removed to be used for police, emergency safety, or roads. The community still needs the proposed funds for affordable housing now for the ongoing development of quality housing that is affordable for these people in our community. We all know that basic shelter is a human right, and one that no matter what side of the political aisle you fall on, understand that it makes our communities healthier, safer, and stronger. My organization helps funds nonprofits, but we hear the need over and over again. These families just can't make ends meet because our county's housing market is just driving them out because of cost. We are not against commissioners meeting other needs. We are not in competition with roads and safety. We believe there are enough options in the $9.2 billion budget and reserves to meet all pressing needs. So we want approval of the recommended $10 million for affordable housing in the 2024 county budget. As a taxpayer, thank you, and a representative of over 200 members of this county, I want you to know that we will lose opportunities to leverage state funds if you vote not to support the $10 million of affordable housing budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Liz Gutierrez, David Coleman, and Antoinette Davis.
Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Liz Gutierrez. I'm the founder and CEO, and very proud CEO of Enterprise in Latinas. We are a women's economic development organization. We focus our work primarily in Wai Mama, and we're very concerned about the notion of perhaps not funding the Affordable Housing Fund. We were super excited when this fund was created, and we stand with all of our friends with hope in the work that they've done to make sure that our county stands up and stands out as a county that provides for all of its people and ensures a thriving community for everyone. As others have already said, housing is not just housing. Housing is the foundation for our community and for our families. If our families don't have a safe, quality place to live that they can afford, then what does that mean to the rest of our quality of life? If we are concerned about safety, we must also be concerned about housing. If you're familiar with the ALICE report, it says that it costs about $26 per hour. We must earn a minimum of $26 an hour to have a living wage, to be able to pay for the basic things that we all need, housing being one of those principal needs. I urge you to please stand with the decisions that have already been made, that you so bravely did to establish this fund. And we should really be talking about increasing it, given the state of affairs. In Wai Mama, for example, where the per capita income still stands in about $12,000 to $13,000, and about $35,000 for a household as compared to Hillsborough County at large, which is about $60,000, you can imagine what this means in a community where the average home price is being sold for over $350,000. It's not even a question of the responsibility and obligation that we all have to every one of our citizens. So I urge you to support the containment and, if not increasing, our Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Thank you. David Coleman. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Dave Coleman, and I really want to know what this is. I opened a lawn sprinkler business in the Hamptons in 1984. My pride and my accomplishment was quickly shadowed by the fact that I had created an entity that was now telling me what to do. Hillsborough County isn't this board or even staff, it's a monster that drives itself. $9.1 billion, $3 billion more than four years ago. Yesterday, I attended the THHI County-City-and-HUD meeting where $4.6 million was given to the claim to end childhood homelessness in Tampa. And everybody patted themselves on the back, and it's a wonderful little bit of the puzzle. $9.1 billion is a heck of a lot more of a part of the puzzle. Hope has been here month after month begging you to not end Uptown Sky programs. I have begged for a county shelter. The flu determined that housing and transportation to be the number-one priorities of all of your citizens, that's the number-one thing, is housing in this county. I need a magnifying glass to see the Hope money in this thing. And what is it? Is it 43? Is it 137? Or is it 2? Because you have under the heading of affordable housing in this cursory look at a $9.1 billion budget, you have it on three different pages as three different amounts. I'd really like to know. I asked yesterday if you would provide a 9.1 pie chart explaining what each entity was for. And I'm here tonight, and we had our review, and it's just these pages that I found online. I'm going off my topic, but the city tore apart its budget, rejected what the mayor had to offer. It was a 1,000-page budget that was put on the days, and it was reviewed week after week, sometimes until midnight. And you even questioned whether we were going to have three minutes to speak here tonight? I'm terribly sorry. You do not serve this monolith called Hillsborough County. You serve the people of Hillsborough County. And we're here, obviously, and it's not a one-issue thing, there's the Hillsborough County Health Card. Do you know that $140 million extra sitting in the money, and some of that money is supposed to be used to get the word out that it exists? Yesterday, before I came here, I stopped for my banana muffin over at the Portico, and Jay, the guy who runs it, had no idea what the Hillsborough County Health Card is. It's a couple of blocks from here, and they deal with the most struggling of our citizens day after day after day. And nobody from here thought to go over and say, "Hey, Jay, we got a health card." These people that are coming in, they should know that they can go over to Tampa General and not in Crodet in order to be able to be seen by a doctor. My time is up. I think you get the point. You got to stop what you're doing.
Thank you so much. Antoinette Davis, good evening.
Good evening. It's been said already that a budget is a moral document. I have come several times previously to speak and to be the representation of many who cannot be here today to express the need for affordable housing. My colleagues and I from Hope and the Envision Movement remain faithful to lift up the voice of the voiceless and the most vulnerable people in our county, asking this board to see us, to hear us. We won't stop coming because we understand that housing is a social determinant of health, as has been said, and having affordable housing means that we can be a healthier Hillsborough County. We should all want that. I have a few questions that I just want to put in the atmosphere so that they can be thought-provoking. Who are we? What do we want to be known for? Do we really have to choose between infrastructure and affordable housing? Every two years, there's a local election here in our county, and the previous board prioritized affordable housing, and this provided stability for the community and for the affordable housing developers. We need that stability to send a signal to all of the world that Hillsborough County sees the most vulnerable. In a time where we have high housing inflation, is this really the time to defund affordable housing? housing? Who are we? Are we striving to be the beloved community that Dr. King spoke of? Thank you.
Thank you. Tatiana Morales, Audrey Sullivan Moore, and Carmen Edmonds.
Good evening. My name is Tatiana Morales, and I'm one of the chapter leads of YIMBY Tampa. I emailed all of you my comments previously, but I wanted to make some clarifications because last week Commissioner Owens stated that there's $700 million in the Sadowski Housing Fund that is going to the state of Florida for housing and affordable housing, and this is the year of affordable housing. That is true, but if you take that $700 million and divide it by every single county in Florida, that only leaves us with an extra $3 million coming in entitlements. So that does not mean we are meaningfully getting more affordable housing in Hillsborough County. It means that you're lying to your constituents, telling them that we're getting so much when we are not, especially when our commissioners went against supporting SB 102, which was the funding mechanism to rebuild the Sadowski Housing Trust. So we need to be very clear to what you say and how you act today to the people sitting behind you. Because I promise you, and I said this in my email, that if you defund that $10 million, remember my face, because I will be at every single meeting telling every single one of your constituents that you could not stand for a percentage of the money in this county that we erased in $9.2 billion could not go to affordable housing, could not keep kids in their beds, could not keep kids sleeping safe at home at night. And when we think about the alternatives given, $5 million to PSOC for a building that does not exist, we do not have plans, you are saying to move hollow money into a place that does not have plans, and the other $5 million for roads? We already have hundreds of millions of dollars coming in from FDOT to rebuild our roads every year. FDOT has given it to you in our five-year plan. So yeah, give $5 million to roads and see what happens. You pave a little bit of linen ball. You won't get anywhere in actually readdressing the infrastructure issues we have. But that $10 million unlocked $44 million, took thousands of people off the street, took thousands of people safely to be able to be in homes. And it is shocking, like truly appalling. I was actually a little hopeful. I was like, oh, we have new county commissioners? Maybe they'll do the right thing. Maybe a woman of faith would actually stand up for what's right, what's morally right. And I had been so disappointed to only hear very quiet voices say that they stand for affordable housing. Because you know, every single person here isn't just speaking for themselves. They're speaking for the people sleeping on the street outside, the people that we spend extra on services to wrap around, even though we could just house them, and that would take away from so much of the need. We talk about housing insecurity. 50% of Tampa's housing insecure. The newest estimates on housing affordability in Tampa are... The city of Tampa alone, the housing crisis is estimated to be around $8 billion. So when you see that $10 million, that is just the beginning of an investment that you need to commit. Because the people around you, your kids, your family's kids, and everyone in Hillsborough County will remember this moment. They will remember you either as a person that took away affordable housing, took away shelter from our children in Hillsborough County, and actually stood against the interests of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Audrey Sullivan Moore. Good evening.
Good evening. I stand before you this evening as a Hillsborough County resident of District III and a native Floridian. Communities of color in the state of Florida are under attack. Lifelong residents are being forced out of their homes due to economic hardships that are a direct result of all of the social injustices that are occurring across our state and county. Tampa's inflation rate now outpaces major cities like Miami and Atlanta, which is contradictory to the nationwide low. We are fast becoming a city where residents won't be able to live in the city where they work. As a mother of two young adult children, it saddens me that due to the economic instability of our society in our state right now, that they do not have the same economic opportunities that we did at their age. Most young adults are forced to co-reside with multiple roommates, while the majority of the others, like my son, was forced to return home and live with their parents. Affordable housing impacts more than just the underprivileged. The Commission recently celebrated the third anniversary of the proclamation that declares racism as a public health crisis. Voting to not fund affordable housing in Hillsborough County amounts to structural and institutional racism because it directly impacts communities of color the most. You have an opportunity this evening to vote in favor of funding affordable housing, which you know in your hearts is the politically correct and moral decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carmen Edmonds, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Edmonds, and I'm a resident and taxpayer in Hillsborough County. I'm here tonight to raise concerns over the pending budget for the fiscal year 2024. I am sure you all are aware Tampa has the highest inflation rate in the nation at an astounding 11.2%. Our homeowners insurance is four times more than the national average, and our car insurance is two times higher than the national average. On top of that, our property taxes, water bills, electric bills have all significantly increased over the last few years. This is too much. The average person living in Hillsborough County can no longer afford to live comfortably. I know many older residents who are concerned about losing their homes because the cost of living and insurance is just too much on a fixed income. The Board of County Commissioners needs to do what all of us are having to do and tighten your budget. Please consider the absolute needs of our county as a whole and what will benefit the most people. In my opinion, this would be funding roads, infrastructure, and emergency services such as more fire departments around the county. We do not need to be spending money on frivolous pet projects and pork where there is very little oversight and accountability as to where that money is going. We should not be building or funding sports complexes that our own citizens cannot even use. They just sit there, a vast waste of money to our taxpayers who are not even allowed to use them. And there's many other programs like that where I'm sure if we just took the time to go through our budget, there's so much money in there that could be found, that could be allocated for other things that are needs and not just want or pet projects. At a time when the majority of voters are very disgruntled with government at all levels and in all parties, we need transparency. We need you all to do the right thing and focus on what is best for your constituents. I'm asking you to keep the fiscal year budget of 2024 at or below the 2023 budget and focus on the essentials. And then finally, I would like to ask, why did our county attorney file a motion to remove Hillsborough County from Bob Emerson's lawsuit concerning the fraudulently obtained sales tax? It is my understanding that was never voted on or approved by the Board of County Commissioners. This is an abuse of power and must be corrected immediately.
Thank you for your comments. Stacy Ransom, followed by Chris Kravitz and Tim Bergen. Stacy, virtual. Staff is Stacy on the line?
Good evening, Commissioner. Stacy never checked in.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Commissioners. My name is Chris Kravitz, and I pastor Waters Avenue Church. Our building is in an area of the county where we see many friends who suffer, struggle from a lack of consistent, safe, and reliable housing. We had a man and a woman who attended our church for a couple of years. She experienced debilitating struggles with mental illness, and he tried his best to support both of them, although he worked the kind of jobs that you've heard talked about here many times tonight. They rented what their landlord probably told himself at night as he went to sleep was an apartment. It was a single room with a bathroom open to the rest of the room, a mini fridge and a microwave, walls covered in filth. We did our best to try to make that livable for them. We all went over there and cleaned it and painted and tried to get out all the roaches, but the infestation from the entire building always made its way back into their room. They paid $800 a month for this room. That was two years ago. I shudder to think what he's up to now. These are just two people of many with whom I have personally interacted at Waters Avenue Church. And they are just two people of thousands who demonstrate the need for safe and dignified affordable housing in our county. With $10 million being, as you've heard, just a small, tiny fraction of the budget, the question of local funds for affordable housing is less a question of affordability or financial viability. It's much more a question of political will. So I just ask, along with so many others, that you make a choice, a choice for what is right and what is just in our county. A choice that, while it might seem small to many of us, has a huge and lasting impact on so many. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tim, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tim Burgevin. As many of you are well aware, jails and prisons are the country's largest housing facilities for those with mental health illness. Hillsborough County has about 2,800 jail prisoners and about 1,100 or more than that, of which have serious mental illnesses. The annual cost of simply housing these people is tremendous, over $53 million. In development right now is permanent supportive housing that is partially funded by the $10 million from the county HOPE Affordable Housing county budget. This kind of housing, coupled with case management for people with serious mental illness, not only brings stability and dignity to one's life, but also reduces baker acts, marchman acts, jail time, and homelessness. It fosters community and human dignity, and in so doing, provides incredible cost savings for our county jails, hospitals, court systems, and law enforcement. The county is chipping away at the estimated need of 65,000 affordable housing units. 1,100 units have been built so far, or about 1.7% of that 65,000 units needed. We have just started to make a dent. The county budget is $9.2 billion. The $10 million budget for the affordable housing is only 1/1,000 of the total budget. That's like seven drops from this eyedropper compared to a gallon of milk. This relatively small investment in the budget has a huge return on investment. Commissioners, if in your mind the decision to cut funding or to extend it is an economical one, this is a clear choice. In my 34 years of living in Hillsborough County, I've never seen those running for office say that having a safe and affordable place to live doesn't matter. When the monies for our affordable housing budget are approved today, it will prevent the inevitable and greater cost down the road. And I leave you with one last thought. Fram Oil Filters had a TV commercial that showed a mechanic stating, "You can pay me now," pointing to an oil filter, "and then to a torn apart engine, or pay me later. Paying later will be much more costlier." I respectfully ask you, as elected reps of the people of Hillsborough County, not to cling to a partisan ideology, but to the golden rule, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Please vote for the continued $10 million budgeted line item for affordable housing. Thank you.
We have State Rep Diane Hart virtual, and Reverend Karen Sims virtual.
Good evening, Commissioner. I believe that Diane did not check in. I would also like to say that Stacy Ransom appears to be on the line now, if you'd like to...
Is Reverend Sims on the line? County staff?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Reverend Sims.
Madam Chairman, this is Reverend Sims.
Good evening.
Thank you. Madam Chairman and members of the Commission, as many of you may not know, I am the retired Deputy Regional Administrator for the Southeast and Caribbean region of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, as well as the former Tampa Field Office Director. I worked with Hillsborough County to address the affordable housing needs of our community and continue to serve in a volunteer capacity today. Hillsborough County was one of six communities leading the nation in the rate of homeless families, children, and veterans, and was selected by HUD headquarters for targeted work to address this problem. Today, because of an aggressive shift under the leadership of the former county administrator Mike Merrill and the board, as well as the push from HOPE, this cycle has slowed down. We have incised the problem, but we no longer are amongst the leaders nationally for homelessness of families, children, and veterans. The Affordable Housing Funds work to provide shelter for these families, for our children, and for those who have defended our country. At a time when housing costs continue to escalate, when supply is limited for rental and ownership opportunities, we need more funds to go into the trust fund and not less. I know that you realize the impact that housing construction has on our local economy. From contractors to suppliers, to professional architects, engineers, and realtors, affordable housing supports our economy. Teachers and first responders need more affordable housing options, not less, be able to live near their sources of employment. Seniors and veterans need more options, not less. Our children need more, not less, to keep them here in Hillsborough County. While we have federal and state funds coming to our community, they are not enough to address the needs of our home. These are our residents that need our help, and we should continue to stand with them to provide that help. I agree that roads and sidewalks are important. After all, my husband is a former owner of a roadway construction company. Too many of our residents, though, have had to sleep on our sidewalks for years and still are. The board's leadership provided for the citizens to determine how to fund roadway and sidewalks improvements through the increase in the gas tax...
Thank you so much. Reverend Sims, thank you so much for your comment. Thank you so much for your comments. Yvonne Frye, Sean Wilson, and Paula Rose. Yvonne Frye. Sean Wilson.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Sean Wilson, President of Blue Sky Communities. I want to thank the Commission for their support for several affordable housing developments that we have created with HOPE funds and with other funds as well. As one of the principal implementers of this funding, I am here to tell you that it's a very effective program. It addresses a well-documented need that helps our local employers be assured of a stable workforce. The board should not be ending effective programs. I'm sure there are many ineffective programs that are worth looking at, that was spoken about a little bit ago. And I would urge you to look at the ineffective programs, but not one that's working so well. I'm not sure why you wouldn't want to see it succeed and be able to point to some of these communities that get built, as several of you did in July at Uptown Sky, and say, "I helped to build this." Get a hug from a resident. Get the feel-good part of being a commissioner. I heard someone say that a new traffic light might save a life, and I think that's true, and I think there probably are some new traffic lights in the budget. But don't you know that at our communities, every year, many children's lives are saved, underprivileged youths who are growing, thriving, and staying safe in our communities? It was also implied that due to an increase in funding by the state and the availability of other dollars, that it may no longer be necessary for the county to invest its own funds. That's not the case. Those other funds are awarded competitively. The very first funding that's coming down from the state, the Live Local funding, is a $100 million program. In order to compete, you have to invest your own dollars because that fund is limited to 35% of the total development cost. So if we propose to use that state money, the state will only put in 35%. They expect the local governments to step up. There's a system in place for affordable housing. It's a statewide system, a nationwide system. Hillsborough County has participated in that system for decades. A few years ago, you realized that the need was greater than ever, so you invested a small amount of your money. Next year, it would be 1/100 of 1% of the entire budget. I saw, I read through the materials, $356 million, or 1.7 billion for capital projects and transportation, all worthwhile. That's great. But is defunding HOPE really going to make a difference for those justifiably immense programs? Let's talk numbers, finally. On the four developments that Blue Sky has built or is building with HOPE funds, we will create 390 apartment homes. 173 are already done. 140 are starting this year in just a few months. 77 are starting next year. Total county investment for 390 units, 14... $14 million. Additional money that Blue Sky is bringing to the table, $98 million. We're multiplying your money six to one. Break it down. That's $63 per home, per month, for 50 years of county money. That is a great deal for Hillsborough County.
Thank you so much. Paula Rose, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I also am an affordable housing developer. I'm the president and co-founder of Invictus Development, a Tampa, small woman-owned business, in the business of doing what we can to alleviate the shortage of affordable housing. And as so many people have already said this evening, and very eloquently, there are so many things that are addressed by addressing housing. With the housing stability, there are so many outcomes that are improved. And I think the thing that I really want to emphasize, just because I come from the development side like Sean, and I know what a difference it makes to have these local funds. That $700 million that the state is going to build affordable housing, the question is, will it be built in Hillsborough County? And without the contributions from the county, we may not be able to make deals work here. And those funds will build those housing units elsewhere. We have a deep need here. Those dollars should come here. We should get our share by putting up our share. Out of a $1.9 billion budget, the city of Tampa saw fit to more than double the funding that it set aside for affordable housing, knowing that this will help leverage those state funds that are coming down. This may be a one-time opportunity to access this funding. Of all years, this is the last year you should be cutting back on the local source of affordable housing funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Lawson, Valerie Lawson. Ashton Nesbitt.
Valerie Lawson speaking.
Go ahead. Good evening.
My name is Valerie Lawson, and I am a taxpayer resident and homeowner of Hillsborough County. I am asking that you please allow the affordable housing bill allocation to remain in the county budget in full. I am also a senior citizen. I will no longer be able to stay in my house forever. I have looked into the cost of affordable housing because it is very expensive on a limited income to afford the upkeep of a house. It is cheaper for me to pay my mortgage than it is for me to try to move to a less costly, as far as maintenance is concerned, apartment. There is none. I have to stay in my house and pay maintenance, and my house is too large for me since my husband died. It would be much better for a family to live in my home and for me to move out into a single-bedroom apartment that I could afford. So I ask that you please consider me and other senior citizens who have this problem, that they cannot find affordable housing in Hillsborough County, and they are on fixed income. And also, I am disabled. It would also be an advantage to me, because I have medical bills to pay, to have an affordable apartment that I could live in, instead of spending my extra money on trying to maintain a four-bedroom home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ashton Nesbitt virtual.
Yes, good evening. This is Ashawn Nesbitt. Thank you all so very much. My name is Ashawn Nesbitt. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Florida Housing Coalition. And on the behalf of the Coalition, of course, we are so happy and excited to stand here and support the Hope Affordable Housing Act. For those of you who are not familiar with the Coalition, we are a statewide provider of training and technical assistance on affordable housing policy, development, and program compliance, and we've been doing that since 1982. And we ask that you please seize this opportunity to continue to fund the Hope Affordable Housing Act. Since the Hope Affordable Housing Act went into effect, you've heard about the several projects, and it has stood as a leader in the state of Florida. It really demonstrates your commitment and makes a statement that local funding is a key to the puzzle. We recognize that our state's affordable housing crisis cannot be eradicated solely through the use of public dollars. It requires an intricate web of financial and regulatory policies to harness the private and private sectors' ability to produce affordable housing. Regardless of how many levers the county can pull to tackle this issue, the use of local funds is a key piece of the funding and policy puzzle. I want to say that much has been said about the recent passage of the Live Local Act, and no one's more happy about that than the Coalition. This act is the most significant piece of housing legislation since the passage of the Sodowsky Act in 1992, and reverses a pattern that began with similar discussion about priorities. This act does include record funding. However, as others have said, please, please understand that this funding will be, most of it is administered at the state level, over two-thirds of it at the state level. And the money that's going to local governments is divided amongst over 120 districts. Only about, less than 10% of that is coming to Hillsborough County. Of that money that's going to local governments, most of this money will be administered at the state level through competitive funding. The Hope Dollars well positions Hillsborough County to attract its share of those funds and direct them towards locally determined priorities. And without them, Hillsborough County will lose out on this once-in-a-generation opportunity to address its affordable housing needs. When it comes to housing, transportation, and public safety, the needs for all of these is unquestionable. But the question should be, how can we utilize local resources to address all of them? And so therefore, we kindly ask Hillsborough County Commission to continue to fully fund the Hope Affordable Housing Act through the appropriation of local dollars, and by doing so, the county can continue to serve hundreds or thousands of residents a year by providing safe, secure, and affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chloe Coney, Mara Lance, and Michael Moore. Chloe Coney?
Good evening. I'm Chloe Coney, a woman that wear many hats. I have my speech all written up. I don't know what's happening right now. Let me see what I can do. I'm so sorry. I'm here as a seasoned practitioner. 31 years ago, I started CDC of Tampa, and the very first project we built, Osborne Landing on 34th and Osborne, affordable housing. And my son, Ernest, if he was here, who is the president of CDC of Tampa, would tell you they built over 100 homes, single-family, both in the city and the county. So we know firsthand the housing needs in our community. I'm standing here because when I was working with Congresswoman Kathy Castor, I went to all the meetings of Hope every, every month. I know the needs. And I want to say thank you to you county commissioners for funding that $10 million housing trust and setting this up. We have seen the impact that it's made. But today, we're saying we need more. When we're looking at Sodowsky Act, we know that the legislators are no longer rating that housing trust fund. So we're saying locally, what will county do? Please don't raid the Hope Housing Fund, which is so needed in our community. I have my own testimony now. My niece, who had her own apartment, they sold the apartment, the investors did, the rent went up over $500 a month. Making $17 an hour, she can't afford $500 a month. So she moved into my house. As school was starting, my grandson's best friend, mother, she's a caterer, her rent went up $400. She's going to move out. So she asked me, could he move into my house, so he can have a place until she can find somewhere affordable for her to move to. My house is becoming the Hotel Motel Holiday Inn. And these are real stories, because many of these people will be living in cars or homeless. It is true today. So I'm asking you, county commission, please continue to fund. That $10 million is so needed in our community. And thank y'all for allowing me to speak. And as they say to me, I had someone say this to me last week, Chloe, you old gunslinger, fighting for justice. So tonight, I'm going to fight for justice. Thank y'all so much. God bless.
Thank you. Mara Lance, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mara Lance. I'm here on behalf of many taxpayers in the city of Tampa and Hillsborough County. We are seeing an unprecedented amount of increase in our inflation. Inflation has gone up in the city of Tampa, St. Pete, and Clearwater, 11.2%. We're the highest in the whole nation. We're higher than California, which is at 9.2. We're higher than New York, which is at 6.5. So I'm here representing the taxpayers. The public funds that you are discussing are taxpayer money, and we need to be fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' money. There are many, you know, medium incomes right now have gone down for the last three years, and families can't even afford to live in their homes, much less senior citizens. Senior citizens are the highest-rated group that is being left homeless, because they're being taxed out of their homes, not only taxed, but because of the increases in auto and homeowners insurance and food. Everything has gone up, and we cannot continue like this. Right now, at this time, we are at the level of the Great Depression. I'm serious. 1930, if you take the medium income at that time and the cost of living, we're at a depression state. We need to be fiscally responsible, and at a time when the whole country is in a crisis, we need to watch what we spend, especially on the sports complex, which was not a need. The main needs for government is our sheriff, our fire, and our infrastructure. I was appalled when I saw $3 million to go to the arts. Arts does not supply housing and other needs to our community. So please be fiscally responsible and help the taxpayers at this time who are struggling every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Moore. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Monsignor Michael Moore, and I'm the pastor of St. Lawrence Parish in Heims in Hillsborough. And many of you may remember, or maybe you knew him personally, Monsignor Larry Higgins, who was a member of this community for decades. He was over 60 years. He worked very tirelessly with government, people of all faiths, backgrounds, race, for issues in our community. And one of them that he worked on for decades was affordable housing. So I know that if he was here, he'd be speaking tonight. The second point I want to make is that our Bishop, Bishop Parks, has made a primary goal of our pastoral plan, affordable housing. I think you've been a part of some of those decisions and those projects that we've started in this county, or the IC's five counties. So, you know, I'm glad that he's on that and has that focus. And my third point is that really, good government is, for those who are in need of affordable housing, a basic right and a need. The primary responsibility for that, primary focus for that, is local government. And it makes sense, right? If people in state and federal are looking at, well, how can we portion dollars? First question they're going to ask is, what's the attitude about affordable housing with the local government? If they see that as energized, they're going to be part, we want to be part of that, building a coalition that can deal with this problem as we go forward. If the contrary is there, it would seem to be very detrimental. Because people would say, well, if the local government doesn't see that as a high priority, why should we get involved? I think it's a leadership issue, too. And that leadership is yours. It's, I think, a sacred trust. So thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you. Willow Peterson.
Good evening, and thank you again for giving me the opportunity to come and address you. I am with Bible-Based Fellowship Church and also a member of Hope. I was here last week, and I spoke about a man by the name of Ray Bond, who was homeless because he could not, he could no longer afford to pay rent, although he took on odd jobs and has government assistance. He said to me, when I saw him, "Have you talked to those people down there at the county board yet?" And I told him I had. But what would make me very pleased and exuberant is to tell him I did talk with them, and they've decided to keep the $10 million in the housing fund, so that we will have affordable housing. On another note, I gave out toiletries to a young man a couple of weeks ago. He too is homeless, because he cannot afford the rent anymore and has been evicted. He told me, when I gave him the toiletries, which included some soap and a washcloth, he said, "I'm so happy it's raining now, because I can take a bath." How many of you would want to not only be able to take a bath until it rains? I don't think any of you, not any of us, would want that. The funds should not be removed to be used for police, for jails, emergency roads, and the like. Do you realize it is less expensive to send an at-risk person to Harvard than it is to put them in jail, as we're building these jails? And the wonderful thing out of that, sending, instead of putting the money in jails and for that sort of thing, is that when we send this person instead of jail, and to give them a Harvard education, should that be the place they decide to go, we get a productive citizen out of it. Consider what you get when we do the alternative. So now, I don't see any of you with earbuds in your ears, so I know you hear me. But I'm just going to ask that you hear me with your heart. And I'm just going to ask that the funds that have been allocated, that you honored before, that you not take them out of the affordable housing budget. I thank you.
Ms. Peterson, would you state your name for the record, please?
It's Willa Peterson.
Thank you. James Clark and Manuel Lance. James Clark, good evening.
Good evening. My name is James Clark, and I live in Hampton Terrace. One week ago, I mailed all of the board members asking for your support to continue to fund the Hope Affordable Housing Fund. I am here, again, to ask you for your support as you vote on this important budget item. My message is personal. As you may or may not recall, I stated in my letter that the Seminole Heights community of Hampton Terrace, where I live, has a problem with unhoused individuals traveling through and occasionally squatting in our neighborhood. On the afternoon of July 23, 2022, Tampa police were called to remove a man and a woman who were squatting in an unoccupied house down the street from me. The police arrived and removed the individual from the property, but, having nowhere else to go, the man walked away. to go, the man walked away, and the woman walked into the alley and laid down in the shade to get away from the hot July sun. Sometime thereafter, my neighbor pulled into the alley to access his garage, and apparently not seeing the woman on the ground, accidentally ran her over. Paramedics were called, and they did what they could, but she later died of her injuries at Tampa General. That same day, I had to personally remove debris from the accident scene in order to exit the alley from my house. The incident has traumatized me and many of my neighbors. Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa have various programs to assist both poor and unhoused individuals. However, advocates have told us that without stable, affordable housing, the success rates for many of these programs diminish significantly. There simply is not enough affordable housing in Hillsborough County to meet the demand. People end up on the street for a number of reasons, but lack of affordable housing should not be one of them. I urge all the members of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners to approve at least $10 million for the continuing funding of the Hope Affordable Housing Fund so that my personal experience and those of the victims and my neighbors will not happen to others. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Manuel Lance, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Manuel Lance. Excuse me. I've been a resident of the city of Tampa and Hillsborough County for 49 years. I was construction administrator for the Tampa Housing Authority from 1979 to 1985. I established my own business with my wife in 1985, Manuel Lance Construction. I went into public building. I was MBE with the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County. I got awards on both the city of Tampa and Hillsborough County. I retired in 2015. All throughout my time, I built apartments and office buildings for my own. Right now, I haven't retired completely because I have apartment units, very affordable housing units, dwelling apartments in the city, in Oak Park, in East Tampa. And I'm still the one who rents the apartments. I'm very proud of the way I've conducted myself with my tenants, and we have both had great relationships. Affordable housing, I think the money's great, and the programs probably are great, too, that the county has. The only problem is how effective and they've been in terms of the agencies that administer those funds, and if they're truly helping our residents, our citizens here in Hillsborough County. I don't want to get political, but if we have open borders and we're getting impacted, Hillsborough County, the city of Tampa, by those decisions, then we gotta look into where the problems are surging that we cannot really satisfy and improve affordable housing here in Hillsborough County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next three speakers, Tanya Whitlock, Gerald White, and Reverend Michael Price. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Tanya Whitlock, and I am the founder of a nonprofit called the Inclusive Hive Community. Our vision is to build accessible, inclusive, affordable housing for people with disabilities. My why in starting the nonprofit is my 29-year-old son, Trace, who you will be hearing from tonight. Trace is non-speaking. He uses an iPad to communicate, and he also uses a power wheelchair for mobility. We have had a very difficult time finding adequate, affordable, safe housing for Trace in all of Florida, not just Hillsborough County. I have sat with many individuals with disabilities and also their parents. I have sat in support groups with caregivers in tears because they have no idea what is going to happen to their loved one when they are gone. And we are not making a plan. The places that they live, this space that they live in, their leadership is not making a plan for affordable housing and making a plan for what we're gonna do in the future. And because of that, we're gonna have to deal with the economic backlash because there is no plan being put in place, and affordable housing is not a major issue. With my son, as with many individuals with disabilities, he experienced what's called the cliff. That means after he graduated from high school, he began to lose community. He began to have difficulties, again, accessing affordable housing. And because of that, he became depressed. He started writing music, and the first line of the music that he wrote was, "I've been trapped in a mental prison for 19 years and shed many tears." We show the individual with disabilities their worth by how we decide to spend money. We show their worth by how we treat them. And affordable housing is a basic right, and they deserve it. We know that the most independent, safe, and affordable housing not only affects their mental status, but physical and emotional well-being as well. Housing instability leads to increased homelessness. We've all heard in this room all of the areas of special needs populations that are being affected. Between the year 2000 and 2022, Florida lost 59,578 units of subsidized rental units from the affordable housing stock. That was based on a point in time count. The Schenberg Center for Housing Studies has estimated that over 66,000 units are at risk of being lost by 2042. Zillow observed rents index, the Z-O-R-I, noted that between 2020 and 2022, after nearly a decade of relatively stable rents, rents across the state consistently rose by half. I'm also a nurse. I've been a nurse for 23 years, and I've worked in the community. And I, we clearly see that housing is healthcare as well. Housing must be considered a first-line response to the personal health problem of individuals.
Thank you so much for your comments. Thank you. The next speaker, Gerald White. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Acting as Chair. Gerald White, Hillsborough County Community Activist, Bonnie Wise, thank you for the budget. Thank you for the excellent bond ratings. I encourage every citizen in Hillsborough County to read the county administrator message to the public. I'm kind of disappointed to have to stand here and hear the folks that came to the last public hearing, asked for $10 million, and then the comments during the commission to take the $10 million away. We vote for you. You don't vote for us. We're asking you for the $10 million minimum that was in the recommended budget by the county administrator, Bonnie Wise. It really should be, if it was me, if I had a vote, I would put 15 million in there minimum. So I'm asking, I vote for four county commissioners. I got my voter's card here. I vote for four county commissioners, District 3, District 5, District 6, District 7. We need to start counting some votes. We need to vote and count some votes. All the public need, all the citizens need tonight is four votes for the majority to get the minimum $10 million and $5 million for the trouble you've put us through tonight. We want the votes. We want the affordable housing. We have a solid ballot budget. We're not passing on any additional taxes to the citizens of Tampa, which I'm grateful for. This was a fundamental right. This is a basic fundamental right that every citizen, no matter where you live in Hillsborough County, wants, need for their family members. Give it up. Stop playing games with us. You don't vote for us, we're not gonna vote for you. It's just as fundamental, as basic as that. I'm asking the citizens of this county to dust off your voter registration card and tell the commissioners, you don't vote for us, we're not voting for you. Every citizen in this county got four votes, and we need to start counting those four votes and make sure those folks' votes are cast for what we want. And it's unequivocally clear at the last public hearing and this public hearing, the public, the citizens, the residents of Tampa, Plant City, Temple Terrace, unincorporated Hillsborough County has called for and has asked for over and over and over and over and over and over and over again for affordable housing. Vote for us, we're not gonna vote for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Michael Price. Good evening.
Good evening to you all. My name is Michael Price. I'm the senior pastor at Victory African Methodist Episcopal Church and a member of Hope. For three days on my to-do list was to write something to be prepared for tonight. I found myself in a quagmire of statistical data and budget sheets that only proved to me, as a former eighth-grade math teacher, that $10 million out of a $9.2 billion budget was absolutely, positively nothing that we're asking for. Hope is here, in this facility, and 30 members downstairs watching. In the Hebrew scriptures, the prophets of old jobs were to challenge the kings and the kingdoms of Israel and other nations without care for their feelings or what they thought. And I am here tonight to tell you that whatever faith you are in, God will judge you for your vote that you cast tonight. As a prophet, I am telling you that if you could even come up with the idea to remove the $10 million fund, you need to check your conscience and your heart. And you certainly need an examination of whatever faith you belong to. Because the tenet of all faith is to do justice, to do right, to care for the marginalized, the outcasts, the poor, the widow, the children, the orphan. And if I'm angry, it's not anger, it's indignant righteousness. If you could think such a thing, shame on you. The fact that we're here for a second night proves that there is something ungodly and evil. And if you vote no, you have made the Board of County Commissioners for Hillsborough County a den of thieves who rob from the poor and give to the rich.
Thank you. Sandra Wright Albin, Sheila Thompson, and Tracy Thompson, M.D., in that order. Sandra? Sheila Thompson?
Yes.
Virtual, okay, I can hear you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Sheila Thompson, and I'm from Bible Base. I came here in 2010. My granddaughter was born, so I came down from Maryland. And I found a nice community to live, was a 55 and older community. And I've been here for over 13 years. When I first moved here, the rent was fantastic, five-something, and every year it went up and up and up. So in 2002, I moved into a two-bedroom. And it jumped from, was it 15, no, 1100. And I moved in with my sister, and she moved out, so now it's on me. But the reason I think I go for the affordable housing is because all the senior citizens that were living here, you know, individual, then they had a nursing home, they're all gone. And, you know, I don't know where they, I don't know where they went to or anything. But now we have younger, a younger crowd, like 30, 40. And, you know, it's getting hard for me to do that, you know? So I definitely believe we need more than $10,000, $100,000. I mean, we just need more. Thank you very much.
Tracy Thompson? Good evening. Tracy?
Um, Commissioner?
Good evening.
Tracy never signed in. I would like to, Commissioner, Tracy never signed in. I would like to remind you that I do have Stacy Ransom, who was number 16 in order. She has now signed in.
Okay. We can take Tracy Ransom at this time. Go ahead. Thank you. Stacy?
Madam Chair and the Board of Commissioners?
Good evening.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Stacy Ransom, and I am an active member of the Bible Base Justice Ministry as well as Hope. I come asking you guys this evening to please allow and keep the Hope Affordable Housing Fund to remain in the budget for 2024 and beyond. I want us to ask, to ponder a question. Why is removing a person's basic need for shelter even on the table? According to Maslow's psychological theory, shelter is essential for fulfilling subsequent needs. Without shelter, other things such as food, oxygen, water, safety, none of that is even possible if the person does not have the basic need of shelter. When we talk about safety, how can we overlook the fact that suitable housing makes people safe? When we talk about roads, what's the point of having roads if the person isn't led to their home? We can't be more concerned about spending on frivolous things than we are about making sure the elderly, our teachers, our veterans, young adults, young couples, young families have what they need to be well. A home is not a luxury, it's a necessity. This is not a black issue. This is not a white issue. This isn't a Spanish issue. This isn't a Republican issue. This isn't a Democratic issue. This isn't an independent or a Tea Party issue. It's a people needing to be human issue. The hardworking people of Hillsborough County should not be in a position to have to rob Peter to pay Paul just to afford the place that they live in. They should be able to have a safe, affordable place to live so they can focus on the multitude of other challenges that life throws at us every day. Hope has done the work. They provided the data. The results are before you. So please, I ask you to be human and show your commitment to the people that put you in office, not just your party, and continue to allow at least $10 million in Affordable Housing Fund to remain in the budget for 2024 and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana Lazarus? In person. Lazarus? Debbie Hunt, virtual? Debbie Hunt? William?
Yes, ma'am, I am here.
Good evening. Go ahead and speak, please.
Good evening, Chair. Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for taking comments tonight. As you already know from your own term notices, that just because the mileage did not change, our actual amounts to be paid did. Of course, they went up. Commissioners, please adopt the military that gives Hillsborough County the same budget for fiscal year '24 as had in fiscal year '23. Give back to the residents of this county for a change until you're able to spend what was provided last year. Supply chains are not improving right now. Please do not support the $10 million to affordable housing, not because I don't care, because I do. They have other sources of funding, including Sodashty Fund and sales of Hillsborough County-owned properties. There will not be a loss of state funds as there is already a dedicated There will not be a loss of state funds, as there is already a dedicated source of funds to match them. As you make adjustments for the reduction of $500 million, please focus on the preservation of transportation and stormwater infrastructure that has been disminarily maintained. Place appropriate funding emphasis that should have been done for so many years. Also, please fund much-needed fire services, mostly, I believe, in South County. Again, do what's best for the residents and taxpayers of Hillsborough County. Approve a fiscal year budget that is the famous fiscal year '23. Thank you.
Thank you. William Bradbinner? William? Virtual, William? Kathy James?
Commissioner?
Yes?
Commissioner, William was online earlier, but he appears to be disconnected. I do believe I have a number that belongs to Tracy Thompson, though, if you would like her to speak.
Okay, Tracy, go ahead, please.
Hello, this is Dr. Tracy Thompson. Good evening. I'm a board-certified internal medicine doctor, and I've been a Hillsborough County resident for the past 13 years. I am also a small business owner of Dr. Tracy's House, a primary care clinic that sits right on Nebraska Avenue that I started in 2022 to serve the community in East Tampa, where we see patients with and without insurance, as part of my personal mission to serve the community that I now call home. I asked the county commissioners to approve the $10 million Affordable Housing allocation. Over this past month alone, 37% of patients we saw at Dr. Tracy's House were uninsured or underinsured. Many of these patients were also housing insecure. What does affordable housing mean for those in health care, like those served at Dr. Tracy's House? Patients who don't have affordable housing struggle to afford their high deductible copays. They defer going to see specialists. They push out doing needed cancer screenings. They have to live with other family members and don't take care of themselves. This means they don't see their primary care doctors and end up going to the hospital or emergency room. And hopefully, they will get discharged to follow up with their primary care doctors. And if they don't follow, and if they don't follow up because they can't afford it, they return to the emergency room for yet another high-cost visit. Having affordable housing means less stress in having to decide between rent and seeing the doctor. It is less expensive for the county to support affordable housing than to not support affordable housing and see exponential increases in health costs. So I urge the county commissioners to continue to support the $10 million in affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Next three speakers in person, Kathy James, followed by Rick Coons, and then Trez Whitlock. Is Ms. James here? Is Rick Coons? Coons left, okay. Trez Whitlock, followed by Kurt Christensen, and then Brian Scott. Who? Trez.
It will take him just a second, just because his hand dexterity is, he's pulling up, but he wants to speak in tight, so it's gonna be a second. Do I just hit play?
Truthfully, I have lost faith in leaders, but this is not about me. It is about people like me, so I ask you to think about how you would feel if you had a disabled family member needing affordable housing and ask, is this the right thing to do?
That's all he said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitlock. Thank you, sir. Kurt Christensen, followed by Brian Scott, and then Sam Lebron. Mr. Christensen?
Good evening. Howdy. Nice to talk to you all, county commissioners, and thanks for your support for the Hope Project for the past few years. And I hope that you can support the $10 million, if not more. My name is Reverend Brian Scott. I'm a retired pastor and former administrator for 18 years of a homeless prevention, as well as shelter services program. I'm also a resident of Lutz, Florida, and I'm a member of one of the churches, another Lutheran church, is St. Paul Lutheran Church, which is also a member of Hope. The $10 million that's being requested for affordable housing is less than 1% of the county budget. I'm asking Hillsborough County, and I'm asking directly the commissioners here, about those who are at risk of homeless, are they worth less than 1% of the cost that the $10 million represents in the county budget? And speaking of the county budget, I noticed that 71% of the dollars were in public safety programs, are not affordable housing and connected with public safety. If you don't have affordable housing, you're gonna have a lot more issues with public safety. So that's where that is. Having run a homeless shelter that served homeless adults and families, I can assure you that without the funding of homelessness, we'll be making lots more cost in the county budget as part of that process. And most of those who are homeless or in danger of homeless are those who have been county residents for a number of years, and they're struggling. Just this week, I had like three people I talked to who had to move out of Hillsborough County because they were senior citizens or in fixed income, and they couldn't afford things like the doubling that they're experiencing with homeowners' insurance. They just couldn't afford that along with other costs. So thank you. I pray that God will lead your decision-making in this process, and God bless.
Thank you, sir. Brian Scott, followed by Sam Lebron, and then Nora Hamlin. Mr. Scott?
What's that? Yes.
You're Brian Scott?
Yes.
Okay, Kurt Christensen? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Colonel Kurt Christensen. I'm a retired United States Army Colonel. I'm not here really to talk about the affordability of the housing or not. I personally understand the cost of living going up in Hillsborough County. My own house went up to $907 a month just in homeowners' insurance. I'm here to talk about is really the overall budget of the county. We need, in this time of inflation, the insanity brought on by the corrupt federal government and what it has done to us, the pandemic, Florida becoming the choice of many people to move to, then the outright profiteering and raising of rents capriciously has hurt the working class and, most importantly, citizens on fixed incomes like our seniors. You need to be good stewards of the taxpayer's money. I'm not against affordable housing, but I want to make sure that you look at every item in the budget, every item in the budget, and fleece too, everything, and make sure you keep our taxes the FY '23 level. This is not the time to raise taxes or to increase the budget. We need to tighten our belts. I've tightened my belt at home, I made my kids tighten their belts, I know my neighbors are tightening their belts. Government needs to tighten their belt, too. We can find money to help people need it the most. Look at every agency. Nothing should be exempt from the table. Be good stewards of the taxpayer's money, I implore you. Thank you very much for giving me my time to speak. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Sam Lebron, followed by Nora Hamlin, and then Cecilia Yocum. Is Mr. Lebron here? Okay.
Good evening, county commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, as well as the other individuals that have spoken tonight. So yes, I'm here to talk about affordable housing. And the reason is, I was born with a disability. It is all that I know. But I live in one of those communities built by Blue Sky. Four years ago, even with my disability, I had a full-time job. I was working with benefits and able to save money for the first time ever in my life. And then a secondary disability struck, and I wasn't able to keep that full-time job anymore. I had to request stuff from the state, caregiving services, supportive living coaching, and that costs the state money. But there's one point that I want to make tonight before I leave. Disability can strike at any time. Like I said, I was born with it, it's all I know. But every single one of you that is standing before me tonight, disability can happen to you too. And you could be like these individuals behind me that are asking for that $10 million. So that is the point that I'm trying to make, is that disability doesn't discriminate, it can happen at any moment. So before you make your decisions tonight about that $10 million, think about yourself and see, okay, if this was me with a disability, what would I do? Thank you.
Thank you. Can you please say your name for the record?
Samantha Lebron. It's under Sam Lebron on the docket.
Nora Hammond, Cecilia Yocum, and then Jane Burkard? Nora did? Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you and our audience. My name is Dr. Cecilia Yocum. I'm a licensed psychologist in Florida. My background is developmental psychology, primarily working with youth and their families. As part of my job, I've gone into many homes in Hillsborough County to do home visits to determine what services they might benefit from. On these visits, though, I've seen extreme poverty in these homes. Broken furniture, knocked-out windows. Sometimes there's only one bed for the whole family. Sometimes there's two or three families living in this home. The children don't have a place to sleep. There's perhaps one couch that's lost its innards, and there's no way to sit. I was very affected by this level of poverty. I'd never seen this up close. And I think we've all understood that we were dealing with a tremendous increase in rent. But have you ever gone to a house where there's no windows? There's no windows in this house. All the windows were broken. There was barely, barely a roof. You can imagine the stress these families are living under. Another problem with some of the older homes is there's still a level of lead in the paint that was used many years ago. This is outlawed now, but children, unfortunately, test all kinds of things and put them in their mouth. And these lead chips have a sweet taste that draws children. Or they inhale the dust from the deteriorating paint. It's a toxin that affects their brains. And over years of exposure, it can cause permanent damage to the child's brain and system. There are also children that don't get enough to eat, and the ages between zero and four, five years of age is critical for nutrition. If children don't get that nutrition, that can affect them for the rest of their lives. I also have noticed a lot of overcrowding because people can't afford a home of their own, they have four or five families living there, and you can imagine how difficult that would be to have four or five, people were walking in and out. How do you, how does a family, oops, okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. The last two speakers are Jane Burkard and Laurie Jones Alukku. Good evening.
I'm here for one, oh, my name's Jane Burkard. I'm here for one purpose, and that is to ask you to please give the $10 million on the budget for affordable housing. The people that are gonna use it are the ones, they're gonna be making it a home for their children, for their parents, for their, and they work in our community and need a place that they can afford to spend their money on to pay their rent. I've lived in South Tampa for 54 years, and the cost of real estate is astronomical. Now is definitely the time to support affordable housing in Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burkard. Our last speaker is Laurie Jones Alukku.
Good evening, commissioners. And I also did not prepare notes, but I am so grateful to be here this evening. I am a member of Hope, and I'm from Bible Base Fellowship Church, and I always like to share my personal reasons for being here. And I also am a resident of Pebble Creek Community. And the evening that most of my neighbors showed up here that night, I wasn't able to be here because I was watching my grandbabies. And I tell you what, if I had shown up that night, I would have told you that that developer showed up at my door one day. They knocked on my door, and I'm a member of Hope, and I asked them this question. Okay, everything looks beautiful. Are you building any affordable homes? Because my son and my daughter-in-law, they have to live with, they can't afford to live in the community that I've lived in for 25 years. And you know what they told me? No, ma'am, these houses will start at $500,000. And I almost slammed the door in their face, but I didn't. And I thought, well, I'm going to that meeting, and I'm going to vote against. I'm gonna encourage you guys to vote against it, but at the end of the day, you voted against that. However, I'm really shocked that I'm standing here because I couldn't believe that I heard that you were not going to include the $10 million this year. That was a possibility when I still know that my son and my daughter-in-law and my grandbabies can't afford to live in the very community that I intentionally bought my son to live in 25 years ago. Yes, they moved in to the mother-in-law's home when the rent went up $1,500 because they couldn't afford that. Then they saved up a down payment for a house, and then the house prices went up to an average of over $300,000 in the very neighborhood. Now, do you think they can afford that? So this is not an unusual story. It's not just the homeless that live one mile from my house in New Tampa in the woods that I see. And if you live in New Tampa, just look in the woods, they're there. It's the homeless families that we have to worry about. And when you drive around and you see them, it has to tug at your heart. But it's also our young adults. Well, they have to... Will they have to move to other states? I think we all have a lot to think about tonight, and we have to consider that when we make our vote. Do we want our babies to be living in our neighborhoods or not?
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Can you say your name? Can you say your name for the record, please?
Lori Jones Aluku.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comment. It's now appropriate for the board to discuss any changes to the budget. And Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I want to start just by thanking all of you for coming here tonight. And the reason at the beginning I really wanted you to keep your three minutes and not two is because I realize that you are people that have given so much to the community. And you make your way down here to speak to us and, again, bear witness in the community. And I think that that's a tough thing to do. When you work with people that are suffering, when you're hearing those stories, when you're trying to care for those people, it is something that hurts you as well. But you're willing to take that on, and you're willing to let this community know of this incredible need. And that's why I actually made the motion four years ago to add, to start our first $10 million Affordable Housing Fund. I also was stunned that there was a move afoot to remove it, especially, it's gotten more critical than ever, I'd say, in the last two years. You all have said testament to that. And when I hear, well, insurance rates have gone up and this and that, yeah, they have. But this isn't the county budget that we're talking about when you talk about that. And I really think, I mean, mine have increased a few thousand dollars without ever making a claim. But that's not what this county budget about that we're all contributing. And as we said, or as it was said, it's far less than 1% of this entire county budget. In fact, for a house assessed at $350,000, the $10 million is $21. What is that, like four fancy Starbucks a year, every quarter, for one of the people in that house of 350,000 assessed? That is, I just think you would get huge support in this county if it was ever put on the ballot, because people want to see the community taken care of. And as you said, when we provide shelter, we provide so much more. One-fifth of these are children. They're people with disabilities. There's seniors. There's veterans. But there's all these people in need whose lives, you know, just by having the basic thing of shelter, health, it brings health, prosperity, opportunity for jobs. It is critical, important, first building block, the domino, I think, that affects and changes so many lives. And I'm so proud of this board that we've been able to fund, I understand, or leverage funds for about, in these four years, about 1,000 units of the 50, 60,000 that are needed, and at such a low cost. Now, I learned some things tonight that I didn't know before about how special this year is, because I hadn't heard this part, and I thank the affordable housing people who came tonight to educate us a little, was that we have a special opportunity this year from the state. And that's that if we can match dollars, we can even do a greater leverage of this $10 million fund. We can take care of a greater need of so many people in Hillsborough County that are suffering so greatly for this. And because of that, I mean, it's just, it is, you know, and I heard, actually, during an energy, they came in public comment the other day, and somebody talked about renewable energy. And they said, the basis, and I hear it tonight so much, you know, what I was taught growing up was love thy neighbor as thyself, or someone else said, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. I certainly would have, I'm a taxpayer too. I would want somebody to do this unto me. It is a small contribution to bringing a healthy and prosperous community. And knowing that we have this special opportunity that may just last this year, may not last forever, and they could take it back, knowing that we have that, I believe that, at least for this year, we should look at our contribution that we're making to our reserve funds, which is, and look at that for this year. And instead of making that contribution, I'd like to find out how this would work for this one year only. Not only do the $10 million, but do 10 million more in our reserve funds. And that would be for this year, rather than the contribution to reserve funds. I don't know how we worked the math out for that, but I'll just say that as we put the motion together, that would be my motion tonight.
Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank everybody for being here today. I really, really admire your passion and for your cause. And I think affordable housing, I agree with you all. It's a major issue, not just in Hillsborough County, but across the state of Florida. And I think that's why the Republican-led legislature and Governor signed into law the Live Local Act. It's an act that, there's already two, my understanding, two projects going up in South Riverview and Valrico. Those are two projects that would not have been approved by this board. I think that this year, there will be more affordable housing approved than ever before. And a lot of it, obviously, is going to come from that Live Local Act. I do understand that we have to compete with that with other counties. But we are at a time right now where we've got to walk the walk. And our roads, public safety and infrastructure, we have ignored it for far too long. And we have to make tough decisions right now as a board. This is one of them. This is one of those. And one of the speakers alluded to, used a kind of clever, with the eye drops and the gallon. Well, it's just a different political philosophy, I think. I think every one of those eye drops are precious. That is taxpayer dollars that I am a steward for as the representative of District Four. My district has been loud and clear to me. They want roads and public safety put first. And listen, as we throw up a lot of these Res Nines and Res Twenties, my firefighters are right there in the back. We're only doing one fire station. We don't have an eight-minute response time. We had the chief here. He gave, he gave us his plan moving forward, and we told him everything he wanted to hear. But when it's time to make tough decisions, we say something different. So I know that these are, and I will allude to this, you know, is the voters of Hillsborough County, they dusted off their voter ID cards, and they voted. They wanted a different direction for this board to go in, and that's why we're here. I also want to point out too, and I know that Commissioner Kemp, you alluded that last time, that 30% of the CRA goes to affordable housing, all the CRAs. So I think you made a point last time that Tampa, it's hard to get the property to build these projects. Well, and that's another big issue to really talk about, because affordable housing should be concentrated on the urban core. It's where public transportation is. It's where the jobs are. And that's just good planning. And I'm afraid that we're continuing to make decisions, especially in East and South County, where 30% of the future growth, guess where it's going? South County. And our roads and infrastructure, it took me 54 minutes to drive 5.8 miles on Boyette this week to get to this, to get to a meeting. 54 minutes to go five miles. There was no accident. And that is why I am going to stay committed. I ran on it. It was my, it was a promise that I made to my district, and I hear them loud and clear. I still hear them loud and clear. And that is why I'm going to be supporting reallocating those funds. I will sit back, I don't know, Commissioner Kemp, if you made a motion, did you make a motion? Okay. So I will sit back and listen to some of the other commissioners. Thank you.
I think Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too would like to thank all of you who made comments tonight, and particularly the comments were more centered around housing. And we know that's a cry throughout our nation. But I want to go ahead and make the motion to approve the budget as presented and adopt the military in the budget. But most important, I want to thank Bonnie Wise, the county administrator, and her staff for presenting us a balanced budget, and for all those, Tom and Kevin and your all's team, who put this budget together for us. It's a good budget. I know we looking at other opportunities coming next year. The county only has so much money this fiscal year, and I know we constantly talk about our transportation needs. And when we get to the other part of the, the second public hearing, we're going to talk about the fire. We've got a fire station, there's one in my district on 78th Street that will be coming. Yes, we asked county administrator Bonnie Wise last month to find ways to come up with some additional funding revenue, that we can do more things in the county. We can fund transportation. We can look at public safety. We know those are the two top here in our county. But right now, we have to put a budget in place for October 1. And so my motion is to accept the budget, adopt the budget as is, and end the military. That's my motion.
Bonnie, let me ask you. I think the motion is out of order because prior to voting on the budget and the millage resolution, we need to read a lot of things into the record. So how do you suggest we handle that?
Well, that would, what is in your packet is what was proposed in the recommended budget. So that would be how we would do it. If there's other changes, however, to the, anything else that would need to be incorporated.
I know, but prior to being able to approve that, Kevin has to read in a number of things into the record.
Yes.
So I think the motion is premature to be able to even--
We can have him read that or wait.
You can have, say that again?
Kevin could read those required term, those required statutory required language into the record if you would like him to do that now.
Okay. Well, first of all, is there a second to Commissioner Myers' motion? Okay, the motion dies. Prior to adopting or making a motion, we do need to, again, have Kevin read into all the different millage rates before we do that. Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you. Let me just be clear that I will be able to support Commissioner Myers' motion or Commissioner Kemp's motion. Once we've gone around the table and heard from everybody, I think it'll become clear what the wishes of the board are. I also want to thank everyone for coming down tonight. I will not vote for any budget that removes the $10 million in affordable housing money. I agree that this might very well be the year that it makes sense to do a little bit more, given the availability of additional state and federal funding and the possibilities of a match. If the board is interested in doing that, I would certainly go along with it. Last week, we identified the ability to remove $10 million from the contribution that we are making to our reserve fund, as distinct from actually taking money out of reserves, which no one is suggesting doing. And that is a way that we could put the additional $10 million, or we could fund the $10 million that Commissioner Wustel asked for, for PSOC improvements and additional money for transportation and infrastructure needs. As long as the affordable housing money, the $10 million, is still there, I would vote for any one of those three options. I think that the case has been made very persuasively tonight, that it would not only be a detriment to the community to remove the affordable housing money, but quite frankly, it would be heartless to remove it. Because that, when we're talking about the suffering in the community, we have to have our eyes open to the fact that right now, people need this type of assistance, and we can leverage these funds by making them available. They can create a lot more than $10 million worth of units. Our needs are, our needs are very great across the board, and we have a nine-plus-billion-dollar budget that is funding everything that the sheriff asked for. It's funding everything that all of our constitutional officers asked for. And while it most certainly is not funding everything that Hillsborough County Fire Rescue asked for, as Commissioner Myers mentioned, we have tasked the county administrator with coming back to us with a dedicated funding source to address those needs. And I, for one, am going to vote for that recommendation when it comes in order to put the necessary money toward public safety. But I don't think it needs to be taken out of what is really a very modest bequest toward affordable housing needs. So that's the motions that I'm willing to vote for once we've gone around the circle. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wustel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did want one statement that was made cleared up, because I thought it was a good point. The comment about the recommended $136,754,000 for affordable housing services, I heard one of the speakers confused about which number is it, and if they could just clarify what that $136 million dollar number is representing for the speaker, I think that would be helpful as well.
So the $136 million is the budget as a whole, and that would include grant funds. And there are quite a lot of grant funds in the affordable housing program. The other numbers were only those figures that came from the countywide general fund and the unincorporated area general fund, which are subsets within the whole budget.
So the, I see the actuals for 2022 ended up being 26 million. The adopted for '23 was 115. The recommended for affordable housing services for '24 is 136 million. But is that, that's not actually how much money that Hillsborough County is going to get for affordable housing services, is it?
The, there are a number of grants that straddle, there are federal grants, state grants, mainly federal grants that straddle fiscal year. So there is carryforward. And there's also carryforward in the Hope Fund as well. So I think that's primarily what's going there. The amount, the additional amount in the recommended budget and the tentative budget going into the Hope Fund is 10 million.
So then, I'm just, I'm not trying to trip you up. I want to make sure that everyone understands what the real number is that we're dealing with, because I know there's a lot of different funding mechanisms. So then, is the real number for fiscal year '24 affordable housing services without this $10 million of property taxes, then would the real number be $126 million for affordable housing services in Hillsborough County for fiscal year '24?
The total, the total budget, affordable housing budget across all funds, all types of funds, 147. 10 of that is the additional 10 million.
Okay, so we're, we're doing really well then. We're over, well over $100 million for affordable housing services in Hillsborough County--
In the FY '24 budget.
--right now. In fiscal year '24. I just, I just want to make sure that the, the public is crystal clear about that. And I truly and deeply appreciate everybody coming here tonight. I think that we all agree and understand that the inflation that has occurred from the federal government is just untenable. But with that being said, I think it's how, and we're agreeing on a large majority of this budget, and I hope that people's minds are at least partially swayed by the true whole-picture number, which is on page 46 of the Departmental Budget Summary comparisons. It's the first line item. We're just talking about the proper way to, of how this should be funded. Fundamentally, property taxes are something that, it's an unavoidable tax on someone's cost of living. And for the one developer that came in here and jeered about the inventory that he creates of affordable housing that he profits from, I would challenge him to join me in South County, where we have the most dense population of senior citizens on fixed income, that he would love to be priced out of their homes so that they can be forced to rely on that inventory. And that is not something that I can partake in when it comes to how we're going to fund these, through which funding mechanism. If this funding mechanism was through a sales tax, even a 10th cent sales tax in Hillsborough County in this day and age-- tax, even a 10th cent sales tax in Hillsborough County in this day and age would give affordable housing $19 million a year. And at least as a sales tax, people could choose to avoid that or choose to participate. That is wholly where I lie, I live and die on this conversation. So this number of $10 million is unfair. It's untrue. We just heard the whole big-picture number of all of the hard work that's been being done in Hillsborough County. And that's not the only social work that we're doing. Over almost $20 million of social services directly, $13 million, the Sunshine Line, which goes to help more of that, that I would say, atmosphere of individuals. Homeless and Community Services is another department that's getting another $8 million. I mean, there are several line items within this budget that go to social services that are not grouped as a whole. And there is a substantial number that goes directly to Affordable Housing Services. So in which way we fund those mechanisms is, I think, truly where I'm debating. I think that we all understand and know, I believe that the same thing that was done with the City of Tampa's budget that backfired greatly was when they advertised this, this disingenuous averaging down of what might be seen on someone's milage rate, and that it was going to be some low number, and it was said that they could afford it. But what really happened is when people got their trim rates, they realized, okay, for me, that's $900. For me, that's $1,500. And those are the types of things that even if they do live in a home that's slightly more expensive, that then prices those folks out of their homes. So the biggest conversation that dies with me is that this is property taxes, and there's, there's always a wonderful excuse to always slightly incrementally justify increasing someone's cost of living. But there's never an excuse to slightly and incrementally lower it through property taxes. And that is why I individually cannot get on board with the use of subsidizing one family's cost of living to build homes for another that might then make them rely on that same government-created issue. And I will.
Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The talk about, Ms. Wise, the talk about not putting as much money in our reserve fund, how, how could we, say I disagree with Commissioner Kemp with the way she wanted to spend that money and had other ideas, what could that go to? Could that go to, for example, fire safety instead?
Right. So one of the options that you all discussed was contributing less to the reserve funds this year. And I appreciate Commissioner Cohen making that distinction, and I think you did just as well.
That frees that money up, though.
It would. So it would be a one-time, and we had shared with you that $10 million is a number that we're comfortable with, because it would still give you the ratio within your policy, as well as any protection for any changes in the economy that we may face going forward and still preserve our bond rate.
Yeah, and I'm not saying I want to support that. I just, that's a funding mechanism that I really didn't know existed. And, you know, with the critical needs we have with public safety, you know, that, that may be an idea in the future. Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate to make a motion now? Or would you, has everyone, I want to make sure everyone had an opportunity if they wanted to speak, so.
Well, I'm going to chime in at some point, but it's certainly appropriate to.
Okay. I move to direct staff to move the $10 million of funding that was allocated in the proposed budget pursuant to ordinance 1919 and reallocate the full $10 million to our county jail for pod improvements. I direct staff to use the $10 million, which is available as a result of this reallocation, for road paving and sidewalk repair in unincorporated Hillsborough County.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Owen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wustel. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we keep making motions, and we discussed this at the first hearing last week, and we asked staff to look at some options based on the reallocation of the $10 million. One says split it between the two, between PSOC and sidewalks. And then we asked staff to look at option two, what's four, someone else mentioned about the reserve funds. So staff has given us all these options that we can vote on to include in the budget tonight that will not hurt the current budget. Okay, will not hurt the current budget, which means the $10 million will stay in the housing. And we pull in the $10 million from the reserve, which will not hurt our credit rating. So it would still remain a AAA credit rating to agency. And so if we look at option number four, which the Countywide General Fund Reserve are reduced by $10 million from 280.9 million to 270.9 million, and then the Countywide Fund Reserve ratio has decreased from 24.8 to 23.6, that gives us the $10 million. Okay, that's option number four. I mean, this is what we asked the administration. We took a vote at the last meeting to ask them to put something together and to come back. And we should be able to vote on one of these items in addition to the budget. And we don't have to be here 10, 11 o'clock at night going over the same things that we've asked staff to do last week. That's my point.
I thank you. Let me make a couple of comments. First of all, I want to apologize for being late this evening. As important as this meeting is, my daughter had an important penning ceremony at her high school, and that takes, that's certainly more, more important than, than county business. But I do want to thank everyone for, for coming down this evening. As Commissioner Cohen stated, our needs are great across the board. And I kind of want to put some context into this $10 million in the Hope Funds from several years ago. As I recall, there really wasn't a rhyme or reason when the board approved the $10 million for, for the Hope Fund, other than that was the amount that the Hope folks were not only asking for, but candidly demanding, as I recall. I think Commissioner Wustel really made some excellent points regarding our funding for affordable housing, especially in highlighting the fiscal year '24 amounts. And we didn't even touch on, well, Commissioner Owen did touch on Live Local, but if my numbers are correct, we're going to be receiving an additional $2.7 million in ship funds for, for affordable housing. And in addition to that, there's going to be an additional $250 million going to Florida Housing that will be used throughout the state of Florida for affordable housing. And I'm quite certain that, you know, our county, the size of our county, we're going to receive a significant percentage of those dollars. So when you consider the significant investment that Hillsborough County is making in affordable housing, and with all of our other needs, again, and I've said it over and over again, as far as District Two, it's, it's resurfacing and sidewalks are by far the biggest request and complaint that we receive. I do not have a problem with reducing that, that $10 million. I am struggling a little bit on taking the entire $10 million. To be honest with you, I like your motion, Commissioner Owen. I like the fact that you're reallocating it to resurfacing and into sidewalks. I'm, for what it's worth, I'm leaning more toward leaving, you know, $2 million and taking $8 million and redirecting it. That's where I am. So just to kind of put that on, on the table, and we'll see, we'll see where we go from there. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, is that a substitute motion?
I'll pass the gavel and make that a substitute motion.
Okay, and at first, because Commissioner Myers mentioned PSOC too, and Ms. Wise, would you explain, because we talked about possibly using some of those funds for PSOC, but they're going to be funded, and those funds would kind of just sit, wouldn't they, for a while? Next year is when that's going to really be budgeted. Could you clarify that?
Sure. We will eventually need some additional funds for PSOC. We already have some in the budget. However, we're still under design. So probably next year, we will need another $7 or $8 million. But we really wouldn't be able to spend that right now. And so we really would hate for the money to be sitting there unused when you do have so many other purposes.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll withdraw my motion and second yours.
Okay. Commissioner Myers, you're up, and you have the, you have the gavel.
I needed to make us a comment. Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Haggen in a substitute motion. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Haggen, second by Commissioner Owen.
And point of order, is it, your motion is to use the funds in the, in the same manner in which my motion was, correct?
Resurfacing and sidewalks.
Okay.
We have more discussion, yes. Commissioner Wustel?
I just, I'm going to support that motion. And I would just say for the record, I know that we read in some letters of, of support for keeping the $10 million. But what wasn't read in is, at least, the last time I checked, over 200 emails asking us to be really strict about this budget of individuals and folks that reached out to us. So again, we've agreed on almost a $9.1 billion budget, and we've left arguing about $10 million. So I thank my colleagues for their time tonight.
Commissioner Kemp?
I don't know. The last count I had was like 160 emails that came in last night every two minutes, all saying the exact same thing, like a, a bot generation, but they didn't happen to come down here today, except for a handful of people with that. Again, I would say that it would be a shame when it's $21 for a house assessed at $350,000, when we already know that we have the funds and work it out. And I, and I will also thank you to our staff, because I think that they have done incredible job of making sure that these needs can be addressed. And we always have a, we've, and I've said it before, in unincorporated, we do have our needs there, but we don't seem to have the will to, to fund that at a better rate. At least that wasn't an opportunity that we got this, this, this year. And I wish, I wish we would, because that is a really big need. And it's one of the reasons I got our impact fees raised for a long time. But, I mean, a lot of these things are, are, that the budget increases that you point out are state pass-throughs. I'm sure a lot of it is connected to the kinds of things that happened with our COVID fund. In fact, I know our homeless is a state pass-through. And that's one of the reasons when I looked at this, and people came to me that year, I looked and I said, how much is Hillsborough County contributing? Because the Sadowski Fund wasn't coming down. That's a fund from the state, which could have meant $10 to $15 million a year. For year after year after year, we are getting zero, or maybe a million dollars. I mean, we're not in this crisis for no reason. And I, so I saw a pie chart of state and, at that time, of state pass-throughs and federal pass-throughs that we got. And at that time, it was $54 million. And I said, well, where's Hillsborough County's contribution? How are we in here? And it was zero. I mean, I kept hearing that we did something, but it was zero. This is, again, a diminished investment. We heard from one, that one person, that the $2 million was leveraged for '98. We're hearing about the way that these dollars can be leveraged. It's a small part of our budget. It handles a critical need. And, you know, I'd like to do a, if, if Commissioner Myers, I guess you're chairing it now, so you can't restate your motion, but I, you know, I would definitely, would not like to see this reduced to $2 million. I just think that that would be really, it is heartbreaking. And when this is a generational opportunity to do matching, as was pointed out, one that might just last for this year, this is incredibly significant that we have this opportunity. It's a reason that we can never bring transit, is because we don't invest in it here in Hillsborough County. That's why we have no legacy funding for transit. That's why the state of Florida is so behind on all this. And this is this opportunity that we have, for once, to do this. So I think it would be just unspeakable, really, to cut $8 million. I mean, if anything, then let's just pass the budget we have whole. There's not, there's not even a need, a demonstrated need at this time for the, you know, nothing that's been set aside for the, you know, it was named PSOC. There was, there was the jails. All this was funded in time for what we need. It would rather be ironic, actually, to, to take the money to put towards the jails. We can't do, fund affordable housing, but we can do more funding for our jails, which, you know, we have.
Hold on, please. Hold on.
We have, we have people ending up in our jails that have mental health problems that could use the housing, that could use the wraparound services. So it's, it's very sad to think that that would be the case. So I don't know if we, I'll, I would make a substitute motion at this time to fund it, the budget as stated with the full $10 million.
Second. Okay, we have a substitute motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and just to clarify, that's completely, that was incorrect, what Commissioner Kemp said, the, we're not putting an extra $10 million into the jails. Ms. Wise, could you explain that? We would reallocate the CIT money. If you could quickly explain that.
Right. It's not an extra $10 million. We already have funded the $10 million for, that is requested by the sheriff.
Yeah, so that's completely incorrect, so.
Okay, so I, hold on, audience, please. We're in board discussion. You have had your comments, and we thank you all. But right now, the board, we're in our discussion. Fair enough? Fair enough. Thank you. Ms. Wise, I want to ask a question, because the final budget public hearing, the flags that we received, we had four options, okay? And the last option, reduce FY '24 contributions to the Countywide General Funds Reserve by $10 million to replace funding for the jail improvements, then use the freed-up funds for resurfacing, sidewalk, PSOC renovation, or other identified priorities. The Countywide General Funds Reserve are reduced by $10 million from 280 million point 9 to 270 million point 9. The Countywide General Funds Reserve ratio is decreased from 24.8 to 23.6. The total general, the total general funds reserve ratio is decreased from 24.1 to 23.2. Why can't we use this as an option where the $10 million will stay there for housing and use the $10 million from reserve, so that we can try to get on one accord? Thank you.
Certainly. Any of those options are at the board's discretion, and those were the four options that you asked us to look at. Yes.
Yes. Okay. Because it is an option.
Is there a motion? Are we, what are we doing?
We have a motion from, we have a substitute motion from Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. That's the last on the motion, by Commissioner Cohen.
I have a question. Yes. So you just stated one of the options that's there, and I could also support that option. And I, Commissioner Cohen had stated earlier that he could as well. It sounds like you could as well. And I would be, you know, I could make that motion instead. If, I'll make a motion for that option. That's, I think, option four. I don't have my options here. Is that correct?
I will second that. The clerk might need it to be restated, but I believe that.
I need it restated.
I believe what, what she's saying is, because I'm seconding it, I hope I'll understand it, is that it would leave the $10 million in the affordable housing. It would take the $10 million from the reserve, as outlined in option four, and use that for the infrastructure improvements that were identified in the, in the discussion.
Yeah, for the resurfacing of the sidewalks, the PSOC renovation, and any, any other identified priority. Okay, come on, guys. Help me out. Where's your sheet? Where's your cheat sheet? We all, we all received this.
I'm good with Commissioner Haggen.
Why we can't take it from reserve? It's more, you have $10 million instead of $2 million. If you take it from reserve, you have $10 million.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
The issue is, is prioritizing those, the, the needs for public safety. That would be my position for reserves. So, you know, that's the issue, is that, you know, we don't...
Okay, we have a substitute motion on the floor. A motion made. Okay, we have a substitute motion on the floor, a motion made by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion failed, four to three. Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, Haggen, Owen, and Wostel voted no. I'm sorry, excuse me, motion failed, three to four.
Yes. Okay, now we have the motion by Commissioner Haggen, second by Commissioner Owen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioner Cohen, Kemp, and Myers voted no.
Okay, I'll turn it back.
All right, thank you. Bonnie, do we need to take a break before we do the?
You don't need to take a break.
Okay, so Kevin, I want to go ahead and read the information to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Get my glasses.
Hold on, Kevin, because some of them leaving, so we can hear you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Prior to approving the millage resolution, we need to read into the record certain information. The taxing authority is the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. The aggregate rollback rate is 8.2465 mils. The proposed aggregate millage rate of 8.8722 mils represents a 7.59% increase from the aggregate rollback rate. The millage rates to be adopted for tax year 2023 are countywide general revenue, 5.7309 mils, unincorporated area municipal services taxing unit, 4.3745 mils, library services, 0.5583 mils, voted general obligation debt for environmentally sensitive lands, 0.0604 mils, voted general obligation debt for unincorporated area parks and recreation, 0.025 mils. So back to you, Mr. Chair.
Now entertain a motion to adopt the millage resolution as presented by staff. The resolution has been reviewed for legal sufficiency by the county attorney's office.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion approved. Commissioner Myers, second, Commissioner Cohen, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to, excuse me, motion carried, six to zero.
And now entertain a motion to adopt the budget resolution as presented by staff, including the board changes tonight. The resolution has been reviewed for legal sufficiency by the county attorney's office.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, second, Commissioner Myers, no comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
All right, that concludes this public hearing. We'll now reopen the CIP public hearing. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to take public comment on the proposed fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '29 capital improvement program prior to board adoption. The Director of Management Budget will present a brief overview of the proposed capital improvement program. Kevin?
Thank you. Commissioners, the capital improvement program is a six-year program from fiscal year '24 through fiscal year '29, and totals $3.7 billion. We have an active CIP. FY '24 includes funding for one new fire station, Progress Village South, a new PSOC renovation project, additional dollars for roadway pavement preservation program, a new training facility for the sheriff, which also will have some emergency management uses. Additional funding is also provided for water set sports complex, branch to regional park, and other park improvements, and stormwater improvements. At this time, Mr. Chair, it would be appropriate to take public comments.
All right, thank you. We got four individuals that signed up for public comment, Gerald White, Reverend Michael Price, and then Tracy Thompson. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner Ken Haggen. First, I want to say thank you. The last meeting, the last budget meeting just concluded. The HOPE folks think that they lost tonight, but really, they did not lose, they did not lose everything. Thank you for saving $2 million for the people of Hillsborough County. That was mercy, that was kindness, that was goodness, that was honorable. And as an African-American citizen of Hillsborough County, a 40-year political activist, community activist, I want to thank you for that. That sends a loud and clear message in every corner of Hillsborough County that someone on the board is listening, and not just listening, is acting in a good, God-spirit way. And I want you to know, the African-American citizens of Hillsborough County, thank you. I support the capital budget, everything's in order, I'm really pleased with the staff of Hillsborough County, the county attorney, the county administrator, Bonnie Wise, her entire staff for putting together a solid, clean budget, does not, that does not pass any additional taxes to the people of Hillsborough County. The citizens of Tampa, which I'm a resident, were fighting to stay above water, and this budget goes a long way in helping us get there. The new commissioners in this community, on this board, need to look at your colleague and take some of the wisdom, some of the knowledge, some of the fitness, some of the longevity that he has. He's been a countywide commissioner and a district commissioner, and you guys need to get on board, all right? I heard comments about what your district want, but all the citizens vote for the majority of the board. And don't single things out and hurt the majority to please the few. God bless you, thank you so much, and have a good evening.
All right, thank you, sir. Reverend Michael Price, and Tracy Thompson, which is virtual, and then Kathy James. Reverend Price here? Okay, is Tracy Thompson online?
Commissioner Tracy Thompson is no longer online.
Okay, it's Kathy James here? Okay, then concludes public comment. Any board discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Move the CIP?
Second.
Okay, so we're, motion by Commissioner Cohen to adopt the CIP program resolution as presented by staff. The resolution has been reviewed for legal sufficiency by the county attorney's office. Second, Commissioner Myers, have no comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Bonnie, anything else? Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.